Okay. So I'm gonna go through this a little quicker, is that right?
Okay. Can you certainly have a researchable document? You could try that, or if not, you could try Destiny. If you tried to work Destiny, you might find it. Psychological, maybe. Texted someone, like, this is, she said it's not much fun, and wanted to go. It's okay. I did see, I saw years back, I was somewhere, seven hundred twenty-two thousand, but the share was up there. But then, on the other hand, they're making purchase orders, so if I don't do something, it's not here. That's why I don't, I can't do much of that, I don't go to Mars, but that's a challenge. Yeah, exactly, no, I think we're just, we have an history of seeing if we can find money to get money. It's like, it's been, it's been to be felt. So, I do, that's why I decided to decide.
Simple space next thing. Sorry, just wanna make sure, some chat to skim on at least.
That's a good choice, though, so that's not a good idea. We have basically, I've still got new special expense gap.
Interesting, so fundamental, that's a good option.
See how some years since I'm here, that may be what much, as much as I was. Yeah, like actual, well, maybe today's back, like, maybe, maybe it works. No, is that never here, or two? Oh, good idea. I don't think it's useful, anyway, just gotta figure out how to make a future. Good, I think that's, that's nice. Like that. Yeah, great, great. That's, that's, it could be. Is that someone who's coming in to try and help fund that? You have thirty-five thousand dollars of financial services that the RSC spends? Who spend it on?
One.
Waiter.
I wanna make, make some light.
Right now. It's, I read it already, so then I found my, okay, and should I just, I should probably wait for it to maybe. We have to call one faster. Sure.
All right, ready?
Thank you.
My name is Yael Fierst, I'm Amherst resident, a well-resigned parent, and an ARPS educator. I was glad to learn about the proposal that the elementary and preschool special education positions won't be cut. However, I was dismayed by the fact that cutting the instrumental music position is still on the table. We continue to see cuts in those student-facing positions that don't translate to standardized testing scores or that are not legally required. But do we really want our districts to offer bare-bones education? The district is losing money by paying for students who attend charter and private schools, yet continues to cut what makes our district special. Can we say that we really value public education when we keep cutting funding? The instrumental music program was already cut a few years back, losing a whole grade of instruction, and instead of restoring it, this budget suggests cutting it further and preventing students from accessing it until they are in fifth grade. I implore you to reject this austerity budget and to not cut student-facing positions. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Allegra Clark. I'm a resident of Amherst, and I am calling to ask that the school committee not vote to send ninety-five thousand dollars to the regional district. I believe this would suck the gun, President, as Amherst has.
Okay.
Sorry, they all come together, so it's hard to know.
Hi, my name is John Bechtold. I'm the head of performing arts for the middle and high school, and also the head for PE and health at the high school. I'm speaking on behalf of my departments and also the exploratory departments, particularly at the middle school. These include the following folks: Ashley Dunn, Marcia Gomes, Chris Finozzi, Kenny Ramos, Ben Copeland, Karakachi Bear, Todd Pruth, Yasu Suzuki, Remy Fernandez O'Brien, and Tina Taylor. And we'd like to offer this shared statement. To the Amherst Regional School Committee, we are writing to you on behalf of the performing arts and exploratory teachers at the middle school and high school. We are deeply concerned about the proposed cuts for the fiscal year 2025 budget in the Amherst schools. In particular, we're concerned about the proposed cuts to the elementary instrumental program of music, as well as special educa-
Hello, this is a public comment for the school committee meeting today of March 4th. My name is Cora Fernandez-Sanderson, I'm an Amherst resident, and I have two children, one in seventh grade and one in fifth grade in the Amherst schools. I'm really calling because I thought the last-
At the right moment?
No.
Hi, my name is Rosie Alec. I'm a resident of Northampton, but I work in Amherst Public Schools. I'm a speech therapist at the high school level primarily, and I just wanted to leave my message for comment if I'm not able to be at the meeting tomorrow, that frankly, if anybody who has known a child or adolescent over the last five years has had moments of despair in how in the world we're handing to them and what we're giving them to handle it. And I have been mostly heartened by my time in Amherst, as I have the resources I need to do important work with students on social skills and on navigating a scary world. And the idea that the solution, or in any way that this town needs to take money and support away from helping teenagers make their transition into the world and be safe and happy during what is a very difficult time of life, regardless of what's going on outside. The idea that Amherst is looking to take away from that is, it's shocking and it's atrocious. I've worked in other districts and seen resources pulled, and I ended up here because I'm, because students largely have what they need. And I don't see how that's going to be, continue to be the case with these cuts. I mean, restorative justice, I mean, it's like, kids, I am, I'm shocked, I'm appalled, but I'm hopeful that the town will find another way. Because it just, it seems frankly foolish to take support away from this demographic, this very vulnerable point in somebody's life. So, thank you, bye.
Hi, this is Laura Yvonne Seidman. As the arts team, library of music, technology, physical education, and arts at Wildwood Elementary School in Amherst, Massachusetts.
Hello, I'm calling about the cuts to the language program at the middle school, and I'd like to strongly advise against. Language is incredibly important, and I would very much hope that the committee sees this way as well. Thank you very much, and bye-bye.
Hello, my name is Soleil Sanora. I am a special education co-teacher at Wildwood. And I am wondering about what interim superintendent Doug Slaughter admitted to in the last school committee meeting about spending over seven hundred thousand dollars on James Levine and Associates as a special education contractor. This is about ten teacher positions. I am wondering about this line item in the budget. So it's my understanding that once the school committee passes a budget, the superintendent can spend funds within the line items of the budget. However, the school committee must approve any spending that goes over the line items by amending the budget to add funds to those line items requested by the superintendent, which means either by reducing another line item or adding to the expected revenue. My question for the school committee is, did you approve this? And why? And if you didn't, how did this happen? My understanding is the superintendent works for the school committee, so the school committee could tell the superintendent to do anything or not do something. That's my question, thank you.
Hi, I'm Ned Young, resident of Amherst, Mass. In addition to being an Amherst voter and taxpayer, I am the computer teacher for the Amherst Regional High School. I urge you to vote no on this budget proposal. I think we can do better. Please ask the town for a bit more funding. During COVID, a lot of our students lost traction academically. But this year, with the help of their school counselors, special education staff, and other teachers, I have seen many of them really develop enthusiasm for academic achievement. We have an awesome team of dedicated educators, but there is still work to do. Please don't stress us out by increasing our workload beyond our limits. I'd also like to speak directly to the proposed cut in my position. Even though I am leaving after this year and thus no longer directly affected, I feel it is my duty to mention how important these courses are. They help make our students better prepared for the careers in tech that our country has a real demand for right now. I just got an email yesterday from the Computer Science Teachers Association, quote, "The Massachusetts Legislature is considering a computer science graduation requirement to broaden participation by students in computer science," unquote. Eight other states already have a computer science graduation requirement. So it just seems like a really bad time for us to be cutting these computer science courses at our own high school. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Prindle. I live in South Amherst on Country Corners Road. And I want to urge the regional school committee to vote no on these budget cuts at tonight's regional school committee meeting. We cannot afford to lose any more paraprofessionals and teaching staff from our special ed programs. We can't cut back on the Ames program. I took to heart very strongly what Principal Sadiq said last week of meeting, of the committee last week when he presented the cuts. It's very concerning to me how little funding is available for our schools. Ceiling tiles would be collapsing in my son's middle school that the morning of their concert in January. They were helping the custodians to mop the black water up the floor in the auditorium before they could perform their orchestra concert that evening. It's unacceptable for a school in Massachusetts, and especially for a town like Amherst that values education. We have heard from members of the staff at Amherst College that Amherst College has been trying to engage with superintendent Doug Slaughter on a financial agreement, and that he's not returning phone calls or emails. I want to urge the interim superintendent to return these calls, to talk with people at Amherst College. It's of utmost importance that we get, importance that we get more money for our school district, and these cuts are not acceptable. Please vote no, thank you.
Hello, this is Venuta Caroli calling. I am a resident of Pelham. I am a graduate of the Amherst High School, and I've been an early childhood educator for over twenty years. And I want to urge the school committee to not pass the current budget as it is. Valuing educators and valuing education is important, and this budget will harm children and harm programming and harm the teachers as well. So please do not pass this budget, thank you.
This is John Bechtold. I'm the department head for the performing arts and for physical education and health at the high school, and want to speak to the cuts being leveled against the region in the current budget plan. The cuts across elective departments will not only mean students in larger classes and fewer opportunities to take those classes, but significant loss in those less measurable but essential qualities of school for our students, such as social connection, passionate pursuit of a chosen elective opportunity, and emotional well-being. In addition to these qualitative losses, the literal implications of these cuts will be visible every day of school for our students next year. One example: elective classes rely on specialized equipment and/or spaces, be it PE, stagecraft, or printmaking. Adding students to these classrooms only dilutes everyone's experience as they wait to turn, their own turn for limited class resources, even if they get them to begin with. This will reduce where we can teach in these courses and how we can connect with our students. We also retain students in our district from charter or private schools because of the depth and quality of our programming. These cuts will invariably communicate to families that might need to look elsewhere for the experience they wish for their child. The pandemic taught us all the importance of having community spaces and means of building human connection. Electives create these spaces through the spirit of shared interest, student choice, creative exploration, and the opportunity to connect with others through making and doing together. We tend to value what we measure. Our worry is that these essential but harder-to-measure realities of our students' experience, the very things they feel the most every day, will be lost to them and unnoticed by the school community. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Yael Fierst. I am an Amherst resident, a parent to Wildwood students, and I'm a speech-language pathologist at ARMS, the high school, and Summit. I want to express my serious concerns regarding the proposed cuts to the faculty and staff at the regional schools. We are already stretched thin in special education, and in order to be compliant with IEPs, we have to contract with outside agencies at high cost. How come the district recognizes the need for these crucial services How come the district recognizes the need for these crucial services by paying contractors and at the same time proposes to cut the positions of the staff members who can support them? Please inspect the proposed and actual budget from last year and see how much is being spent on contractors to date. Where is that money coming from? Instead of underfunding our schools and then scrambling to cover the positions that we already know that we need in order to serve our students and then doing it at a higher cost, don't cut the positions to begin with. Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Kate Kuhn. I'm a teacher, Wildwood parent, and Amherst resident. As a teacher at Amherst High School for the last eight years, I know firsthand how amazing and resilient our students are. However, they deserve better. Last year, I had a student who struggled to find confidence in his academic classes but who was ecstatic about all things food-related. He bragged about making his favorite dish, chicken alfredo, and talked about wanting to be a chef after high school. How much more would he have excelled in this building if he had access to a cooking class during his school day? This class was cut in 2016. These cuts happen again and again. I have conversations with students all the time where I find myself thinking, we used to have this amazing program that would have truly benefited you as a whole person, and now we don't. If these proposed cuts go through, we are continuing to take from students who need and want to learn in different ways. I'm sick of thinking about how students who are struggling now could have benefited from things we've already cut. And again, we are in this position with questions about being able to fund special education, restorative justice, and mental health services. Why are we continuing to take from kids who need the most? I already know of Amherst families who are looking elsewhere for middle school and beyond because they are fearful of this community's ability to adequately fund education for all students. If we don't put our foot down now at a time when teenagers need more resources than ever, who are we? What do we stand for? This community professes to focus on education, and if that's true, we need to demand more funding for our schools. Thank you.
Dear school committee, this is Crystal Larson calling. I'm writing from my position as department head for science at ARHS in response to cuts my department will face if the budget proposal is accepted. I am a Pelham resident. The overall effect of cuts will increase class size, reduce support for students who struggle, and reduce opportunities for science electives for students. In other words, it will affect all students at ARHS in one way or another. Specifically, the cuts the science department faces include: loss of a one-year position, which has been needed for the past three years; allowing a retirement to go unreplaced for their cutting FTE; reduction in co-teaching with special education teachers from around six sections down to one; increased class size across all classes (note that many of our classes are already operating at 24-plus students each); reduced ability to offer advanced elective classes; and reduction in department head release time by half. Passing the science MCAS is the graduation requirement. The science MCAS is content-based. It's a biology/ecology test. The surest path to passing the test is to be successful in our ninth and 10th grade science classes. As such, these are the courses that we provide extra support in through co-teaching and small class sizes. Our success in obtaining much higher-than-state-average results on the MCAS can be attributed in part to these factors. We are deeply concerned that next year we will see a drastic increase in the number of students who do not meet the graduation requirement of passing the biology MCAS because of the abrupt change in class size and co-teaching support. Further, much of the work I do with my department head release time is to ensure students who do not pass the science MCAS receive support for trying the test again, often with individualized and creative solutions. Without time to keep track of students and design intervention, I worry these students will fall through the cracks. The science department is currently able to offer a variety of upper-level elect courses to students who have strong interest in STEM fields, often accommodating requests for students to take two or more science classes in their junior and/or senior years. Our offerings have grown recently in response to student requests for more science classes. Because of the proposed cuts to our department, we will need to devote more of our time and staffing to supporting students in our ninth and 10th grade classes, leaving our upper-level elective offerings in jeopardy. The cuts across ARHS are interconnected, and each will affect the culture and spirit of the school. It will put students who struggle at greater risk and it will imperil our ability to provide enrichment for students who are eager to learn more about STEM fields. Please help us preserve what we do to make ARHS be what it is that our community finds value in by providing and finding funding for what we value. Thank you.
Hi, this is Sarah Barber Just from Leverett, and I'm also the English department head at ARHS. I'm calling to talk about the direct impact on department heads in the proposed budget cuts. One of the cost-saving measures has been billed as consolidating departments. However, what this actually means on the ground is that individual department head release time will be cut in half. In our current block schedule, full-time teachers teach six semester-long classes across the year while department heads teach four. With the proposed cuts, full-time teachers would continue to teach six classes or the equivalent while department heads would go from teaching four to five, absorbing classes from people retiring or losing part of their positions. For one half of the year, department heads would teach a full-time class load while also being expected to continue to lead our departments with no release time. Department heads assess material needs and order books and supplies using their complicated online resource planning platform, plan monthly department meetings, take the lead on goal-setting for professional development, support new teachers, meet regularly with people learning new curriculum for new classes, coordinate bringing on student teachers from local colleges, attend monthly meetings with the department head team and admin, coordinate AP credit, communicate with tutors for students not attending school in person, regularly connect with parents and students, including during extra evening events, organize student awards for our departments from grades nine to 12, and observe and provide written evaluations to every member of our department. On top of this, many of us work to build community among our departments, planning birthday celebrations, holiday gatherings at our homes, and end-of-the-year get-togethers. When teachers have doubts or fears or confusion about things happening at school, they come to us first for both emotional and instructional support. Over my seven years as a department head, my primary goal has been to make life at work better and easier for the teachers in my department so they can be the best they can be for their students. It is no surprise that the longer I sit with these specific cuts, the sadder I become. Recently, for the first time in my joyful and passionate 26-year career at ARHS, I logged onto the MTRS website to begin to calculate how soon I might plan for retirement. I speak now only to say that with each cut, there is a cost, and the cost of many of the current cuts will be huge. I urge the committee to think hard before approving this budget and add my voice to those asking Amherst College to finally nail down a program to provide payment in lieu of taxes, becoming the good neighbor we know they can be, investing in the precious resource that is our public schools. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ruthie Kilohill. I'm a resident of Amherst. I've had two children go to the Amherst schools, and I work as adjustment counselor at Fort Over School and a member of the APEA. I'm calling today in preparation for the meeting tonight regarding the budget. I understand there are positions, both in the middle school and high school, that are on the possibility of cutting them out of our budget, which this would be not just here but permanently. One of the things Amherst has always done well is have a good ratio between students and teachers, with classrooms that don't exceed 30/50, as I've experienced in other districts. Unfortunately, the less teachers and par educators we have in our classrooms, the bigger the classroom sizes will be. We used to be number one in the state in terms of what we could provide students and how our test scores were. And now we've moved to, is it 99 in the whole state? This is sad and not necessary. As I mentioned in previous message to you all, we have many more administrators in our district than Northampton does. And yet, using MCAS as one barometer of, or outcome of what it is, using a data point. Their sophomores last year did better than our sophomores in math, ELA, and science technology in every area. This reflects that what we need is having teachers in the classroom for our students. I also know that in our district, our number of students have gone down in elementary schools. However, the number of IEPs have stayed the same, if not increased. Our students are still feeling the impact of COVID. They're having struggles that need counseling and academic support. Those children are now in middle school and high school. The year that we went remote, those kids, those effects are still impacting them now. So we need to provide them with special education. We need to provide them with parent support and include restorative justice practices. All those people help our students to succeed and excel. Please, please do not cut positions out of our budget. Find another way around this. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Hi, my name is Danielle Seltzer. I'm a resident of Turner Falls, and this is a message for public comment tonight. Hopefully, tonight, you're going to hear from a lot of community members advocating to save specific programs that benefit their children or benefit their community and that just benefit, you know, just specific departments that benefit the children in our schools. From the perspective of a teacher, I want to say that we really need to save all of these programs because all of these programs work together to provide the education for a whole child. We can't cut any of these. These are all essential. And the solution is to patch the hole by saving these programs, but also to change the system so that we can get back what we've already lost. In the time that I've been here, we're already operating in a major deficit. Since I've been here, there have been gigantic cuts in the realm of $1 million. From what I found, financially, year 2017, 2018, 2019, 2022, 2023, and now we're looking at 2024. This is a disaster. Teachers have been sounding the alarm about this for years, as you probably know. And it feels like for the first time ever, we have a group of people on school committee who are actually advocating to change the system. That makes me really hopeful, and I really, really hope that tonight you can continue to change the system by considering alternate funding methods, such as pursuing override votes, negotiating pilot agreements, using your connections or your friends' connections with legislators to pursue regional funding agreements that can benefit not just our community but the surrounding communities. Thank you for not accepting this budget cut as-is, for voting down the budget, and for pursuing the funding that is, that people are trying to cut. Thank you for getting that money back, and thank you for working hard to get the money back that we've lost in all those other years. Our students deserve it. We deserve it. Our community deserves to prioritize education. Thank you.
Yes, hi, my name is Dan Prindle. I'm a resident of Amherst at 15 Country Corners Road. I'm calling today to encourage the regional school committee to reject the proposed budget that they will be voting on this evening. As I see it, the problem that we have here in this town is a revenue problem and not a spending problem. The spending has been cut particularly to education specifically increasingly over the past several years, and we need to do something to generate additional revenue. I also want to encourage interim superintendent Slaughter to work with the Amherst College Towns and Gowns Committee to encourage them to contribute more to our town and particularly to the education budget. The cuts that are proposed are just untenable at this time. We need to stay in compliance as we support our special education needs here in the town and also support the arts as well. If we are a town that claims to value education and to value the arts and to value diversity, equity, and inclusion, we need to make sure that we're putting our money where our mouth is. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shad Almen, and I go to ARHS. I currently reside in Amherst. Recently, I'd heard that there would be cuts made, including a restorative justice program, resulting in the cut of Mr. Buford. As a participant in the RJ program, I cannot stress enough the invaluable impact it has had on me personally, as well as on our school community as a whole. Under Mr. Buford's guidance, many people, including myself, have developed essential skills to succeed in school and forge meaningful connections that have significantly contributed to our personal growth and academic success. The RJ program fosters a culture of empathy, accountability, and problem-solving, which are important attributes in any educational setting. Removing such a vital program would not only deprive current and future students of its benefits but also undermine the sense of community and support that our school strives to cultivate. I also understand that you may incorporate this program into the dean's office, but the deans have a job and responsibility to discipline when needed, which is also vital in a school system. But Buford's work has helped students, including myself, not get in trouble to that point where we need to be disciplined but work out our problems peacefully and maturely. Also giving this program to the deans would just add to their caseload, which I don't think is the smartest idea either. A petition was started, and was over 100 people, in the span of a couple days, with, including students, teachers, and parents, have shown that this program is important to them and would love to see a feature from Mr. Buford and RJ. I will link the most recent copy of signatures, but every hour, many people sign the petition. I urge you to listen to the 100-plus people and reconsider the decision to cut the RJ program and Mr. Buford as it serves as a cornerstone of our school morals and positively impacts the lives of countless students.
Dear school committee members, my name is Amy Kalman. I'm a speech-language pathologist in the Amherst schools. I'm calling as a resident of Amherst, a taxpayer, a parent of an ARH student and alum, an employee of the district, and a member of APEA. The cuts impact all students and are particularly damaging to students who are non-traditional, neurodiverse learners, English language learners, and students with disabilities. But ultimately, they affect us all. We are in this together. The slide representing the cuts in special education is particularly misleading and problematic. It is the only department whose cuts were not expressed in terms of loss of teaching positions or FTEs, full-time teaching positions. These positions include the proposal for close to a 2.0 cut to academic skills, teachers, and liaisons who directly teach, provide special education services, and case management for students with a disability on an IEP. Please keep cuts as far away from classrooms as possible. The cuts damage our interconnected web of community, which we are just mending. The pandemic, the Title IX investigations, the additional investigations, and turmoil have been extremely damaging. This year has also been difficult in special education at the high school in that we have had tons of turnover with leaves, resignations, and disruption with the relationships between students and adults. Please take this into consideration, and thank you so much for all you do. Amy Kalman, speech-language pathologist, Amherst, Massachusetts.
That is it. So thanks for listening and listening. Our next item is to have our discussion and possible vote. Our next item is to have our discussion and possible vote regarding the budget, but I am going to suggest we take a five-minute break and come back because we have been here for a long time and come back at 9:05 and keep going. Thank you. We are officially back in session, and to start our discussion, the, two department heads are going to come talk to us, one from the high school and one from the middle school, and give us a quick five minutes. So. Great.
Hi. Middle school's all about teaming. So, yeah. I'm Irene LaRoche, and I am the Social Studies Department Curriculum Leader.
I'm Olivia Blaze, and I'm the World Languages Curriculum Leader. Caribou Band.
Okay. So we appreciate the time to speak with you. We wish we could focus more of our time on sharing the important work that students and staff are doing at arms. We, we would like to do that. Please invite us to be on your agenda in the future lots of times. I do want to say that with the short timeframe, the arms curriculum leaders were unable to coordinate efforts for a complete presentation, and this actually provides some insight into the future situation for high school department heads. The proposed cuts for high school is the department heads giving up release time that previously they were able to use to support the department work. Arms curriculum leaders do not have this release time, and so that makes department work challenging for us, and we usually have to do it in off-hours. So this is a, is a taste of what you have for your future if this is the cuts that you go forward with. If you go forward with any cuts, it's problematic. So our version is no cuts. Our message is that the total program of the middle school is important. With a wide variety of students, each of our programs meets different needs. Cuts to any program are going to impact students in different ways. Therefore, a cut in one area is a cut to all of us as a collective staff seeking to serve the whole child.
Regarding core classes, the middle school program includes four core subject areas organized into teams with a special education teacher. These four core classes are heterogeneous with a wide variety of needs serving students on IEPs and 504s in an inclusion model. The core subject classes have experienced a 20% increase in class size in the last few years as core teaching positions have been cut. These cuts accompany changes in special education support. We no longer have a general education paraprofessional assigned to each team that used to be able to provide some support in core teaching classes where there are several special education and 504 students. One result of this is that special education students who need support are moved into one core class, which has a special education teacher assigned to it, tipping the balance of that class and creating de facto tracking. The general education math and ELA classes in seventh grade, for example, are 30% IEP, and the general education, social studies, and science classes are over 40%, and more high-need students were moved in just this week.
English language learners are particularly impacted by the increase in class size in core classes such as science and math. Thank you. Where we have experience, that we have experienced at the middle school in recent years and that is proposed again by this budget, large class sizes with less adult support harms all students, but especially those that are already struggling to keep up. For English language learners and many of our students, the exploratories are highlights of their school days where practical, physical, and artistic learning builds confidence and brings joy regardless of learning differences and language barriers. Current classes in many of the exploratories are full to the brim. Reducing sections and increasing numbers risks degrading the important social and emotional benefits of these special learning environments. In particular, the proposal to shift world language classes to an every-other-day model for both seventh and eighth grade at arms would be damaging to student learning and the vitality of language programs at both the middle and high school. This proposal conflicts with the school committee's recently stated interest in restoring the language program to its structure from the 2010s, language classes every day in seventh and eighth. If we adopt this proposal, students would be left with half of the language class meetings that middle school languages used to have. It has also been proposed that the classes become exploratory and non-cumulative. Theoretically, students could start over in introductory classes at the high school and have little to show for two years in a middle school language. The secondary proposal seems to agree that every-other-day schedule would not serve our students' language acquisition needs and would not sufficiently prepare them for high school language classes.
The currently proposed cuts would completely eliminate the dance program at the middle school. These classes, what? These classes uniquely provide a safe and supportive space for students who benefit from an alternative to PE class, and Remy excels at creating the type of student-oriented and student-centered learning environment students so need in a way that I can't do justice to in the time allotted. Having myself processed the incoming's requests for dance classes last summer, I can tell you the demand for these classes is very high, and we were not able to place all students who wanted them into dance classes. Instead of investing in this resource, the proposal is to cut it completely. This last program is just one in a long line of programs that have been lost at the middle school over the years, including all home ec. and industrial arts. Band, orchestra, and choral programs have already been sliced to less than 50% of our previous rehearsal time. Visual arts staffing has already been reduced by 50%. Our librarian has had to take on a teaching load for the past few years due to lack of available exploratory courses offered. For so many of our students, these spaces and programs make attending school possible. They are not extra.
Okay. As you know, the social-emotional health of all people is critically important. We support our students' social-emotional health in our classrooms and in advisory, which is a special time in each day for a small community of students and a trusted adult to connect. Our counselors, dean, and culture coordinator play vital roles in supporting students and staff's social-emotional needs. We do not view social-emotional health as an extra. We do not view restorative justice as an extra. Restorative justice teaches students how to resolve conflict. It prioritizes community over the individual, and it supports collaborative problem-solving that allows staff and students to have a more loving, safe, and supportive environment. It is also an essential part of our, of our equitable discipline system, or unequitable discipline system. The loss of restorative justice position will be detrimental and have a lasting negative impact in our school. So each part of Amherst Regional Middle School is integral to having a high-quality education and meets the needs of the complex middle school learner. A student with reduced experiences in exploratory will struggle to engage in required core classes where they may not feel as excited about the curriculum. We're not saying that it's not exciting curriculum, but we get it that everybody has preferences, and for some students, it's not going to be social studies. That's okay. A student is in an exploratory class who might have a conflict with another student may not be able to capably resolve that conflict without a restorative justice coordinator teaching them those skills. A student who has reduced world language classes will have a harder time accepting their role as a global citizen, a hallmark of our social studies curriculum. The connections are limitless. It is what it means to teach middle school. We help them to build the skills and the content they need to understand themselves and their world, a world that is connected, diverse, and interdependent. All of our programs are essential. Please don't debate which of our programs deserve funding. We refuse to be pitted against one another and need you to give us a budget that serves the whole child. And we're happy to answer questions if you'd like, to the best of our ability.
Thank you all for coming. Are there any questions?
I have like a, just a tiny one. So it's really good to hear some positive stories coming out of restorative justice and like this huge amount of support, and this a little bit counterbalances some negative reports that we've heard previously about how restorative justice just hasn't worked for some people. And I'm wondering if, A, are you guys aware of this? And then if there is sort of a, this is a little bit off-topic because it's not necessarily about the budget, but to fully support the restorative justice program, we need to understand that it's working and is working as it's supposed to. And do you feel like there's just like one or two instances where something just didn't work for one student? Or i- is there a sort of a larger problem with the restorative justice that really needs some renewed training?
If you know.
You can also say we can get back to you.
For sure, we can, we can bring that question back to the group and answer in a group way. But I mean, I want to say that as a principle, we absolutely support restorative justice. We see good restorative justice work happening in our school, and we would like it to continue. And I can't speak to the specifics of what you're saying.
That's fine.
That's great. Are there other questions? Okay. Thank you for the opportunity.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ella Stalker. I'm the librarian here at the high school and one of our department heads. I'm going to be reading a statement that was written sort of on behalf of our full department heads. I'm going to begin by just thanking you all so much for your work. Just sitting here and listening for two and a half hours is, and it's in and of itself quite exhausting, so I really appreciate this opportunity to address you and raise the ways that these cuts are potentially going to impact high school. So the ARHS departments represent art, English language arts, English language learning, guidance, the library; math, performing arts; physical education, health, and family and consumer education; science, special education, social studies, technology and engineering, and world language. Some of these departments have already been combined, like performing arts and physical education, health, and family and consumer sciences, and there are additional proposed combinations coming. It is impossible for us to articulate all of the ways in which the proposed cuts will affect the staff and students of ARHS in only five minutes, and indeed, given the short turnaround time to prepare this statement, it is highly likely that we have missed some of the crucial elements. Regardless of whatever we say tonight, it is important to note Regardless of whatever we say tonight, it is important to note that while each of these cuts will impact our individual departments in specific ways, all of these cuts are interconnected and will affect the culture and spirit of the schools in ways that are much harder to quantify but are no less essential. Collectively, we know as experienced educators that these cuts will put students who struggle at greater risk. They will imperil our ability to provide enrichment for academically advanced students and they will widen the cracks for students who are on the bubble by removing effective interventions. Part of the proposal you heard last week was to combine and realign what are currently smaller departments focused on a single subject area or one or two subjects areas into much larger departments, thereby reducing the overall amount of release time for department heads, increasing their teaching loads, and potentially reassigning some of their duties. In reality, these realignments will significantly increase the work of teachers who take on this role and reduce their ability to support colleagues in all, in every department as well as all of the students in our school. These changes have ripple effects beyond just the department heads themselves. The most obvious of these is that increased teaching loads for department heads will result in de facto position reductions because increased teaching loads for department heads bumps other teachers into part-time positions, as we anticipate will happen in social studies, ELL, and English, as well as potentially others. It is very difficult to retain the same level of exceptional faculty, many of whom have taught here for years, in some cases decades, who are qualified for full-time teaching positions when all we can offer them is part-time positions and uncertain schedules. The proposal also reduces direct student support and guidance where the loss of one counselor will increase caseloads and responsibilities at the same time when we know that student mental health and emotional needs have never been higher. We are also facing the loss of successful interventions, both the academic, both academic and social emotional, by moving a separate restorative justice program into the dean's office and cutting one position there, as well as cutting prep academy sections by two thirds. These programs are especially meaningful to our student body, as you've heard tonight from public comment, and have been instrumental in ensuring that we can meet the needs of our most vulnerable students who may not qualify for other services. Indeed, cuts to tier two interventions like these and restorative justice, along with increased class sizes and a reduction in guidance and other supports, may ultimately cost this district more money because these students may end up needing and qualifying for special education services. In addition to full-time position reductions, many of our department heads manage other things like programs and grants. The Perkins and Innovation Pathways Grants managed by our Technology and Engineering Department Head is a great example of this. That program brings in additional funding to the tune of tens of thousands of dollars into our district. The ability to expand these grant programs as is currently planned and to continue to receive this kind of funding relies on department heads being available to do this work and to build the kinds of creative and groundbreaking curriculum and programs that have long been the hallmark of this district in every single department. This is only possible with release time for department heads. It is also impossible to talk about cuts without addressing how all of our departments will be impacted by the two proposed cuts to full-time positions in special education as well as para educator cuts, particularly through the reduction of elimination of co-taught sections with other departments necessitated by the proposal of reduction in staffing. These co-taught courses enable students to access general education courses and inclusion. And their loss, when combined with larger class sizes, will reduce the accessibility of both introductory and advanced level courses. In some departments like science where there are no separate pullout classes and where retirements and other position cuts will result in a loss of support for our neediest students, these lost co-taught classes are particularly devastating and may necessitate moving faculty from beloved elective options for our upperclassmen into courses that support MCAS graduation requirements and ensure safety in lab courses. We appreciate the efforts that our administrators, Talib, Sam, Mickey, and Chris, have gone to, to focus cuts in subject areas where there are planned retirements or currently open positions where possible. However, these are still cuts. Some retirements this year will effectively cut entire programs. We heard from Ned Young in public comment, um, who has our computer science courses. Almost all of our computer science courses will be gone if Ned retires and we do not replace that position. In physical education, we have an open half-year position or point five position. And it's been open all year at the high school, demonstrating the difficulty of filling part-time positions. And that position is now being proposed to be cut permanently, which imperils the unified budget, which, or we heard the unified program, which provides PE to our intensive need students and provides inclusive access by pairing them with general education peers in physical education. There are also wholesale program cuts at the middle school that will dramatically impact how courses are sequenced and taught at ARHS, most especially in pouring arts where we will lose, where we are losing point five dance position. And in world language where the gutting of the middle school language program all but ensures that students would have to jump through hoops in order to reach the AP level in high school. These reduce the attractiveness and competitiveness of ARHS against our peer institutions and limit our students' opportunities to express themselves and discover their passions. We retain students in our district from leaving for other charter or private schools because of the depth and quality of our electives and the variety of offerings in our core curriculum. The cuts across elective departments and languages and core subject areas and guidance and interventions and co-teaching and restorative justice and departmental leadership, all of these are devastating on their own. But collectively, they are catastrophic. Education is both cumulative and holistic. We strive to educate the whole child. You must strive to educate our whole school. Sorry, I'm getting like emotional. We love our students. We love our colleagues and the communities we serve. We sincerely hope that this is the last time that we are here fighting for them and for the work that we care about so much. We know that our schools deserve and they need more than this budget provides. We urge you to make every effort to fully fund our schools, our educators, and most importantly, our students. That is who we are here for. Thank you so much for your time. I'm over crying now. You can ask me questions.
Thank you. Were there, um, any questions? Were there any questions for the high school?
I had a question for Will that I asked out in the hallway. Maybe we could just repeat it for the benefit of the full committee. So, um, my, I was interested in, I was interested in some of the numbers that I heard, um, March 6th, the last meeting when you spoke in public comment about the implications of the, of the, ooh, long day. The students having six sevenths of a year of language in the eighth grade and how that combined with seventh grade does not translate to a full year of readiness to enter the high school in the second year. Should I rephrase that?
The proposed seventh and eighth language will add up to less than a year of instruction.
Can you tell, because I, you know, yeah.
I think I know how to answer this question. So the proposed new model for languages is every other day in seventh grade and eighth grade in a rotating drop schedule. So the number of classes students get is, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, I believe it is whatever six sevenths of 180 is.
154.
Yes, as opposed to 190.
Yeah, so.
180. 180. So we're looking at, so just explain to me.
So they'll get, if it's every other day, it's half of 154, uh, so 77, um, in seventh grade and in eighth grade.
354. It's equal to one year.
One, 154, yeah. Would be the number of class sessions that they get.
So 75, the new model is 75 years of instru- whoa. Days of instruction in eighth grade.
Can I comment on that? In, in practice?
I, I.
Sorry, thank you.
Sorry. Uh, in practice, I teach that schedule now with my bands. Um, and it, we, we use every other day a lot to describe that, but in practice, it is twice a week. So far this year, it has not happened that I've had my bands three times in one week um, because of the way the drop schedule works and sometimes we have Monday holidays and whatever and there's not whatever. It is twice a week. It is not every other day. And it would make a huge, if we had a different schedule that was a Monday through Friday schedule or if the schedule was different and it was truly every other day, that would be very different. But it's not. It's twice a week.
So follow-up question. Kara, you said, um, you lost 50% of your rehearsal time in the last round of cuts. Is that what you're speaking to now? It's, it's a de facto two-day-a-week program?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one. Maybe we touched on it last week, but that feels like a lifetime ago. So we've been hearing and people have been talking about world language in the exploratory model. Was it ever before in, in the exploratory model in the same way that the other, the art, the drama, the, or has it always been, had, was there always more instruction in foreign language than for those other?
Come up and speak into the microphone, please.
Hello, I'm Cindy Stankwitz. And I was department head before this gentleman here, so graciously took over. And we also have Sean Smith out there who was before me. So we have quite the heritage here. We have progressively reduced the instruction. And if you ask, was it more than that? It was. Each time it was more than that. This would be less than even the last cut. It's basically just shrinking. It's been shrinking the whole time. And one of the issues with, uh, you're absolutely correct. We, we have tried this model with language. We did, we did pilot this a few years back because there were two options given to us for seventh grade, which was to either do the every other day, which it isn't, uh, or to do by semester. And we had an administrator at the time who suggested that it might be easier for scheduling to do the every other day. And so we said, well, since it's all new to us, we'll try that first. Why not? We'll try a year. We'll see how that goes. And it was incredibly unsuccessful from both the teacher's perspective and the student's perspective because nobody knew where we were. I mean, as a teacher, one day you have this group and the next day a different group comes in.
Why was it different? Well, they're alternating. But did you not have the same group every other day?
You had one group A and one group B.
Yeah.
For one class, for the morning class, for the afternoon class, it was a different group A and a different group B. So there were four groups that met on that rotating schedule. One day you had this group A and the group A1 and group A2, A and B1. Next day you had group A2 and group B2. So there were four classes that were happening all the time. You never knew who you taught what. I mean, even when you tried to keep detailed records and everything, it was very, very difficult because there were certain minor things that as a teacher, you remember to tell one group. You run out of time. You don't tell with the next group. And the kids were constantly, well, we didn't know we had to do that or, or you didn't tell us that or yes, I did, you know? So there was a lot of confusion there on the teacher's part. On the student's part, it was also incredibly difficult because seventh graders have a hard time remembering from one day to the next if they had an assignment or what they had to accomplish. And if you've had six days between the last time you had French and when you had it again, you just have to end up re- reteaching everything all the time. I mean, there's, there's just too much of a gap. And it reduces their ability to consider what they're learning to be important because they have core classes all the time, every day. So if you only have language twice a week, well, what's that? That's just, you know, frills. I don't need to remember that. They'll forget, they forget to do it. They forget they have it, you know? And so by the end of the year, cumulatively, even though you can add up minutes and say, well, it's not that much less, it actually, from an instructional perspective, is considerably less. The kids do not accomplish nearly as much as they do when they have at least the consistency of the full semester together. So no, it was, it was, it was disastrous. Then we went, the, the principal came back and we said, please, no. We understand. We didn't want to give up the semester in the seventh grade because before we had a very robust program and the kids did extremely well. In fact, the, the, the middle school. The two-year program, the full two-year program. It was in 2015 that we had to lose that half year in the seventh grade.
Did you have a question?
It looks like you do.
I do. Um, I'd like Will to repeat something you also said in public comment that I, that stuck with me. And maybe.
Sure.
I misremembered, but you said we teach world language like it's a core class in the middle school. And that helped me frame this issue.
Yeah, we do.
So there's homework unlike other exploratories.
And there are regular quizzes.
Yeah.
And if you have a alternating schedule that meets twice a week and there's a snow day
Right.
and a drop, it gets crazy.
Also, you're absent. You have a student who's.
Student is absent one of the days that they happen to have language and they will have often had like two full weeks before they get back. They don't even, you know, they don't even remember they were gone for that class and they don't know what, what it was that they missed. Uh, and yes, we are, we are, I would consider, we are a non-core core class. We are an academic course. We are an academic course that requires progression and requires gradual knowledge, just like math. I mean, we, we acquire language in a very similar way to the way we require, we acquire math in and also learning to play an instrument. These are all skills and it's skill building. Miguel.
I have a question. I'm just curious. I just, I'm just curious if you have access to test systems? Um, if they reflect like this downsizing of the curriculum at the high school level? Or maybe even middle school if they take standardized?
I used to do that quite a bit, actually, and, and look at how students were doing. We haven't had sufficient continuity to be able to do that over the last few years. But yeah, I, I, we could tell, I could tell a very, very significant difference in how the kids were performing at the end of that year versus the prior year when we had had it during a semester. Yeah, there was, there was, there was considerable difference. And it took a lot more time and review.
Yeah, so it's hard to answer with that data. Um, but we can tell you for sure that we've adjusted the starting points of all the classes. So imagine, I'm just going to make up a number. Level two used to start in chapter 14. It starts in chapter 10 now because they just haven't learned as much.
Miguel also knows how many verb tenses he had to learn in French for last year.
Sorry.
So my question may be back to Ms. Stocker. Because it's about the prep sections at the high school.
Sure.
I know you're going from 12 to four and that's a tier two intervention?
Yeah, so my understanding is and I'm, I'm not fully informed about this, but I'll tell you what I, what I do know, um, which is that this is an intervention that is for students who are, are failing or struggling or sort of on the bubble of failing a class or class, multiple classes, um, who are provided within a small section. There's 12 students currently. I think that number is probably going to go up to 15 next year is my understanding. But with one teacher, 12 students, it's like a really intense study hall where they have, there's no homework, but there is regular check-ins. There is a teacher. Right now it's Keith McFarland and, um, Gerardo Zelaya, who we heard from today in public comment, um, who are really working with those students in all subject areas to make sure what's going on in your science class. I see you failed this math test. What's happening in biology? What's, where's that English paper to turn in? And really helps them to learn how to be student. They're really learning studentship skills that hopefully the idea is that they can move out of prep academy and be able to manage that workload on their own. But it's a big adjustment to high school and especially in ninth and 10th grade. A lot of students really benefit from having that additional support, that sort of tier two intervention that prevents them from needing to be evaluated for special education services and provides them with some additional support in learning how to be a, a student and manage their own student needs.
Yeah, thank you. I think that was my impact, my question, because I was wondering one about the impact on graduation rates.
Yes.
And secondly, about in other schools where tiers two, like I might be in one school where they have tier two and another where they don't and we see a lot more folks in special ed, which obviously is more expensive.
Yes, and, and I would have to, I think Mickey or Mackie could probably run the numbers for you, but I, I, she has said in TNL meetings in the past, Will, you probably remember this too, um, teaching and learning as our department head meeting, that we have seen students who, who are suggested or placed in prep academy and are suggested to take that course as part of their course load, see an improvement in their grades overall, and many of them end up not needing it the following year. And so we, we have seen that it's effective. There are statistics to back that up. It's been a successful intervention.
I'd like to add a little bit more to that because prep academy happens two doors down from me where Gerardo does it. Um, there's also a really strong social emotional component as well. Um, because there aren't as many students in the classroom, they come to Gerardo for those sorts of needs as well. He's their trusted adult. So that happens too.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for coming and staying forever.
So welcome to the job, I'm going to be very excited for you to have, but really appreciate all your work and on this very difficult budget, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Jennifer.
Are we ready for discussion?
Yeah.
Can I get one clarification?
One clarification, and then yes, discussion.
So I just want to clarify something that's been reported, and I think, and it was actually mentioned again tonight. So I think it stems from a comment or question that Ms. Hines raised relative to contracted services. And I don't know if she was, to be honest, I don't know if she was indicating for the current year or for the prospective budget, but was asking about contracted services. And she referenced JLA as an example of, and I think that that's been construed, that the amount that she mentioned, which was like $705,000, was exclusively for JLA, which is not true. And I think that the only way that 705 is anywhere near the right number in totality would be for current year and not for, and when we see Q2 report, you'll see this, actually it's a number bigger than that, for contracted service would be in the current year. And so there's a couple of clarifications I want to make. One, that is not one contracted service vendor that's been using it much. And as I noted last week, one of the things that I want to be very careful about with contracted services, what we budget is based on fully staffing our special education program as best we can. And so we are making estimates for things that we will need coverage for. We have circumstances where somebody's out of leave, we have skills we don't possess and we're not going to hire for, because it's a short-term, small, specific need that has a very niche sort of aspect to it, and so we will contract out for those types of things. So there will always be some contracted services in that area. And so what we're budgeting, which is more on the order of about $200,000 in total, is much, much less. Now, what we're actually spending, and like I said later, we'll talk about Q2, I'll talk about this a little bit more, but what we're actually spending is dependent on our open positions that we can't hire for, leaves that we need to cover, the demands of a student's IP, or the testing they need to be evaluated for special education, et cetera. So it's not the exclusion of staffing for these positions, because it's much more cost-effective to hire the people than it is to contract out. So, you know, that's not by design. We do use a lot of the same vendors when we, because we have, you know, if they provide a quality service for us, they're, and they have staff that are available and can provide the service in a timely way, that's part of the factor. One other thing I'll point out, just around the question of procurement, special education has a special exemption from 30B, 30B being the primary procurement law for the state of Massachusetts. Special education, because you are compelled to provide that free and appropriate public education and the services needed for that essentially immediately, and as soon as that need is identified, and therefore, because of that, procurement rules around special education are very different, and there's a lot of latitude to contract with folks in order to meet those needs. So I think there's a couple of pieces here that I want to clarify about, that have been quoted in the newspaper, which I think were slightly off, and I think they misquoted Ms. Hines, they misquoted myself as well. And so I think we want to be clear about what those things are, and how we use those, and how we'd like to use them versus what we are experiencing on the ground on a day-to-day basis. So I just want to put that frame, clarify that for the conversation here.
Jennifer, did you want to start the discussion?
I would love to, thank you. So I will be voting no on this budget that's before us. It contains cuts that would be devastating on many levels, as Ella Stocker said, catastrophic. We shouldn't vote yes out of fear of what would happen if we don't approve. We should do what we think is right, and then deal with the consequences, whatever they are. The consequences might be complicated, but we can handle it. We are creative and intelligent adults who are tasked with being public service to our community, we can do it. So I'm just going to jump right into my idea of what I think we should do instead. So first of all, Amherst College is not going to save us this year. We can and should pursue receiving funding from Amherst College for next year, for the fiscal '25, '26 budget, but there isn't time for that, for the budget we're talking about now, the fiscal '24, '25 budget. It's not realistic or feasible. So last week, we talked about asking each of the four towns to make a one-time gift to the district that's proportional in size for each town for this budget we're talking about, the fiscal '24, '25 budget. And then convene a task force to work on a broad inclusive effort to pass a proposition to and have override in each of the four towns for the next budget, the '25, '26 budget. And that task force could also work on other sources of revenue, such as Amherst College or UMass, or state funding and others. The next budget, the '25, '26 budget, is going to be even harder than this one, regardless of what we do, because we're, what we do this year, because we're no longer going to have Esther funding. So that's going to be a good time to be motivated about coming up with multiple creative solutions. So last week, there was talk about, maybe we approve this budget with all these devastating cuts, and then pursue the one-time gifts from the towns, and then if any of the towns do make a one-time gift, then we restore some of the cuts. But my proposal is, what if we invert that? What if we approve a budget with the additional $1 million? And that could be the path through which each town decides how to fund what we've asked for. They could fund it with their appropriation amount that they've already informally agreed to, plus a one-time gift from their reserves or free cash or wherever it would come from. And if any or all of them don't come up with a way to fund the full amount that we approve, then we figure out what cuts, from the list of proposed cuts would need to be made. So we don't, so we don't pass the smaller amount and then hope for a gift, we pass the big amount, and then let the towns discuss, figure out, figure out how they're going to fund it. So I would urge us to set aside this budget with the devastating cuts and talk about passing the larger budget.
Erv?
Really interesting proposition, Jennifer, but I would like to point out a couple of things. One is the town, we as the regional school committee, the town manager is expecting a budget. And is that, what does that take, Doug, that we have to have to do to the town manager?
April 1st.
April 1st. And then the town manager has to have it to the town council by when?
May 1st.
All right. So if we do not have a budget into the town manager by the time that we are expected to have that budget in there, Jennifer thinks that, well, if we don't have it in there, or if we put in a larger amount, then he, we will have, he will be forced, or the town manager will be forced to deal with that. What I can say, history says the following. Last year, Amherst, the town of Amherst, Amherst School Committee asked for $50,000 or more, and that's what we put in our budget. And we sent that on to the town council. That was rejected out of hand. So the other thing is, we are responsible for having a budget into the county. And Jennifer says, well, we should just vote a larger number. Let me just remind all of us of the following, that the regional, the regional budget financial outline, the regional budget as it is currently constructed, is in danger of failing. It is not sustainable. And there are symptoms to that failure that is there. The first symptom is that we have this $1 million budget deficit that cannot be dealt with by the region that is in its present form. Another symptom is that the roof at the middle school is failing, and every time we, our only response is we'll put in a grant, or a grant. Symptom number three, we can't deal with the track issue. And symptom number four is that we have an aging infrastructure of the middle school and high school. All of these symptoms add up to a systemic financial failure that needs to be recalibrated, rethought about in terms of how this cannot continue to happen on a year-to-year basis. I agree with one thing Jennifer said, and that is that, yes, we should form a task force to sit down with Amherst College. We should do that. The other thing is that, you know, in the meantime, before the budget is due from us to the town manager, that I think that it is really incumbent upon the leadership of the regional school committee to sit down and talk with the town manager, to sit down and talk with the president of the town council, to get and get before them the issues around this budget, at least sound them out. We shouldn't, the leaders should not be passive in this. Finally, what most, what I am most impressed with is the caliber of the testimony that happened this evening and before. Truly, truly, I understand, and I believe that the entire school committee understands, that the incredible grievous, grievous kinds of wounds that will be visited upon the school, the high school and the middle schools are certainly something that we do not wish to do. And this million-dollar deficit, if not dealt with in a systemic way, as I've suggested, will follow us into additional fiscal years. And by the way, this is fiscal '25 budget that we're talking about. Thank you.
So vote no.
Tillman.
I'm going to vote no on the budget as it is proposed, because--
Yes.
Because the impact of, for example, the languages is so significant for every single student, that it really has a huge impact. I think there's a difference between, you know, removing an elective, and I don't want to pick any particular one, which would affect a small portion of students and could possibly be made up, versus a fundamental change in the way languages are taught that will have impact for every student that's taking languages all the way through to high school. So I think that is not acceptable. I do want to say that I do appreciate all the work that went into making this budget and trying to figure out what can be cut, because it's really difficult to get to a number, but I think that kicking the can down the road by somehow just saying, oh, it won't be so bad this year, and hoping that next year will be fixed, is not going to work. Maybe that's what happened last year, I wasn't here last year for that, and maybe that's why we're here now. We'll blame it on inflation, not on the committee last year, but it's really problematic, and I think it's the point where we kind of have to break the glass and press the emergency button. And so at some point, I hope we're going to talk revenue side, as one of the public comments, you know, suggested. And while I can't speak officially for the town of Leverett, I think there would be some reception there to, if all the other towns do the same thing, to, you know, give more with the understanding that, you know, this year, this is necessary, maybe, you know, next year too, but yeah, that's not for me to decide. But I do think that we cannot just pass it as it is, because it has this huge impact, and it doesn't guarantee a commitment. And so while I, I'm not sure what the best process is, and I'm not sure that I want to blow up the regional agreement in terms of assessing the percentages, I do think that we need to do more than just pass the current budget and hope for the best.
Sarah? And then I have Bridgette and Anna and Erv.
So many thoughts. I'm sure none of us want these cuts. I mean, none of these cuts are being proposed because they're a good idea, right? It's only because, as someone said, we don't have an expense problem, we have a revenue problem. Unfortunately, the school committee by law has no authority to raise revenue, all we can do is control expenses. We can advocate, and we can ask, but we can't demand, not in the sense of forcing anybody, any government, to give us more money. All we can do is, what you all can do, what the public can do, is to advocate in your towns, advocate to your state legislators to get more money, because we can't make it happen. In many states, school districts are taxing authorities, and they just, they raise their taxes and fund their budget, and we don't get to do that. So we don't have the power to fix the problem that we certainly wish we did. As for not passing the budget, or saying, just put all the, restore all the cuts, I mean, I get it, but I am concerned about the consequences, because plunging, I mean, if we passed it, at least we'd know what the budget is. If we don't pass the budget, or we pass one with imaginary revenue, that just, that seems to plunge us and four towns into a period of real uncertainty, and nobody will know for quite a while what the, what next year's education is going to look like, what kind of school we're going to have. So I'm very concerned about doing that. I'm uncertain about what our actual deadline is. There was an assertion made that it is not this Sunday. So I don't know, you know, the truth of that. Another thought is that part of what we have to vote is the assessment method, which has, you know, a limit of 4%, but asking towns to then throw in an additional $1 million is like immediately violating the assessment method, so I just don't know how likely that is to work.
This budget doesn't work.
Can you answer about the date and timeline?
Yeah. So the, what the regional agreement says, and I think it parallels state law, is that it's 45 days before the first town meeting, but no later than March 31st. So if, let's say town meetings were all like the 20th of June for some strange reason, March 31st would come up first. But the first town meeting is the last Saturday in April, and so when you work back from that, the 45 days gets us to March 17th, which is this Sunday. So we need to have a budget of some sort passed by that day. The other thing, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll talk to you, is the assessment method. So we have an agreement, that's, it's ours to change in that regard, because it's what's called a modified method. It's not a, it's not a statutory method. And so because of that, you know, we implemented the guardrails of 4% as a bound, and so if we're going to discuss, you know, an additional amount of funding from the towns, we'd have to change the language of that, that we would then need approval of. We're going to need approval of whatever assessment method, unless we use the statutory.
By whom? Sorry, approval by whom?
By the towns. So, and so to pass the budget, you need, and it gets tricky with town meeting, because the town council of Amherst meets regularly, so they can take action quicker, because they're just regular meeting. But for the four towns with town, the three towns with town meeting, there's passing the operating budget, the capital budget, and the assessment method, all three pieces. And the thing is, is that the budget can be passed by three of the four, technically it's two-thirds in state law, but we have four, so it's three of four. So one town could vote no on the actual budget numbers themselves, whereas the assessment method must be unanimous. All four towns must say yes to whatever the assessment language is. We do have to get that approved by the state, and we could take the current assessment language that we have in the sheet that's attached to the agenda, and potentially craft an additional statement to that for the purpose of identifying the, you know, additional funding that we might be putting into the budget. But if we are, if we are going to vote a budget that's a higher dollar amount, we have to have the resources to go with it, and the assessment method has to match up with that. And especially if we're asking our four communities to provide that. Now, how they choose to fund that will be their decision. What they've indicated in our previous meetings, you know, in our last four-town meeting with the assessment method itself, was, given what they have available-- given what they have available in their, their operating budgets as they're planning, can meet the four percent for three of the communities and I forget the number now for, for Chutesberry, it was less than that. Anything that's above that is gonna have to be something else. And so they're either going to have to rework their operating budgets to accommodate additional request or to take it from some other source, whatever that happens to be. Hope that was helpful a little bit.
Uh, Bridgette, you're up.
Yeah, so I think the first thing that I tried to do is just step back and think about it. Like what are our responsibilities? What are we tasked with? And I always come back to a training I went to that was really highly technical on budgets, but the overview, budgets are our moral contract to the work that we're doing. And so we have a moral responsibility. If we go to the mission envisioned on page twenty-two of the budget book, we see the first five of our, of our vision goals are all impacted by the moves in this budget. You know, some of them are deeply personal or strike me. We're talking just people I know off the top of my head, five people of color whose positions are cut. And for every, you know, one student who has one teacher who matches their identity, the outcomes across time are tremendous. So I feel like those impacts are really too much. The world language and how sensible is it? Are we a district that wants to be known for following through with Comanantes and making a robust program at the middle school? I've been contacted this week by eight families who are reconsidering whether to, or what to do in the middle school, I think, between last week and this week. That's, if we're short-sighted in terms of the budget, we're gonna be in a worse position next year. So I'm thinking about at least, I did the math, on keeping the teaching positions, um, that to include restorative justice as well and that's, um, eight hundred, uh, eight hundred seventy-something and some change. So, um, and then I just wanted to say, I was at the mass training with Deb and Sarah on the weekend and the budget presenter said that it's the school committee's responsibility to vote the budget that fulfills the duties and commitments that we've made to students. And then it's the town or the region's decision. If they don't give that to us, then we do have to go back and balance the budget. But my feeling is politically, at least last year in Amherst, we went to Amherst and they said no. But they didn't have all these people coming to the room to let them know, let's let the responsibility lie where it does and not vote for this. I won't vote for this.
This budget's gonna be a revenue issue because people are gonna leave the district.
Anna, you were next.
So I grew up in a, in a district where we had language only in the high school, but we had band, choir, and orchestra every day in the middle school. All three of them. So I've never learned a language in any other way than every day. And the idea that you can teach a language in some other fashion sort of baffles me. So I think I expressed my consternation in the last meeting and to the extent where is it even worth it? If you teach it every other day? Because what are they actually learning? I think that's, you know, we, we have to come to some hard decisions here and, you know, teaching a class every other day is just a non-starter in some ways. I think you might be able to do like a second semester, seventh grade, and a first semester, eighth grade, and then have nothing for like nine months while you wait for high school to start. But you wouldn't lose as much between the second semester and the first semester as you would between the first semester and the first semester and then going into high school with all these huge gaps in between. There's no good solution for this. So I do think we need to look at revenue options. I think we have to reach out, I, you know, apparently we could get funding from Amherst for this coming school year. It just wouldn't happen by tomorrow. It's not gonna happen by Sunday. So we would have to do something like Jennifer's suggesting, where we pass a budget that exceeds the, the current one, puts back some of the funding and then fill in the gap with funding that might occur later. Um, I don't know exactly what the logistics, what that looks like. And if, you know, if, if Amherst rejects that idea, what, where that puts us? If that puts us into a difficult position with the state? Or if we just have, you know, several months to figure it out before we actually have to start paying people?
There's no penalty until July first.
I think what we need to do is form, I, I would propose that we form a committee to do outreach to both Amherst College and UMass to talk about, I don't know if Smith is relevant because they're, they're not part of the district. But, so I think we do need to form a committee to, um, start some of those conversations and that needs to happen as soon as possible. Or, I don't know if this is possible, we could task the superintendent to make the first outreach? I don't even know if that's possible.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Do we should do?
Uh, Earth?
Well, you know, a couple, well, three things. I am, um, obviously devastated by these budgets. Really devastated. I do understand though that if we do not pass a budget and if we do what Jennifer says and just pass it with a higher number, we throw our faith to the towns. We in fact abandon our responsibility and we give it to the town. I don't like that. But the town then will, our town, our town, Amherst, the town council and the town manager will make a, make a decision on the budget. And the three other towns then make a decision on that budget. And one way or another, we're putting our faith there. That's, that's one. And that is for certain. If we do, if we pass it with a higher number, then what we have available funds for, that will occur. All right? I do not believe in hope as a plan. I just never have. The other thing, the other thing is, have we done everything necessary? Is this, is this a budget emergency? If it is a budget emergency, then everything is on the table.
Yes!
Number one, uh, if it's, if it's a budget emergency, should we be thinking about and talking about freezing all hiring? Should we be thinking and talking about freezing all wage increases? Should we be thinking about and talking about freezing colas? Should we be thinking about, uh, reducing costs in other areas? And freezing them to this year's level? That, if it is a budget emergency, all those things would have to be on the table, including making sure that all of the budget cuts that are going to come, and I, you know, I will be really with Doug looking through this and I hope the other school committee members will do the same thing, to make sure that all these cuts that we're proposing are as far as within the classroom as possible and we should insist on that. Yes, so here's the final, my final thought is, if we are going to, in fact, in, in effect, throw ourselves on the mercy of the town, let's do it with our eyes open and say, hey, this causes all kinds of complications Doug was trying to outline, uh, outline them to us. And are we ready, willing, and able to live with those consequences?
Uh, Dan, you were next.
Yeah, also so many thoughts. The first one, I, and I have two. So let me finish both of them, please. The first one is, I do not understand fully, and it is essential that I understand fully, what actions on behalf of this committee will lead us to, um, the one-twelfth budget scenario in which we essentially have the state deciding that we are going to fund our schools month by month at the level that we funded them last year. That's the one point.
Why don't I answer that one first? So if we, um, so, uh, if the, if whatever budget we, and this is true in a year, so this isn't specific, this is just the general mechanics of, of how some of this works. If our budget fails, so either the assessment method fails or two of the towns don't vote for the sort of actual numbers of, of dollars, we have a failed budget. If that is true as of July one, then we go into a situation with the one-twelfth budget, which again, where they use the current year and then they use, but they use the coming year's statutory alignment of, 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 uh, minimum local contributions, et cetera, et cetera, which is a very different thing than what we do with our current assessment method. In order for towns that have town meeting to pass a budget, regardless, they have to call a town meeting.
Yes.
Which is part of why if we don't, you know, given the timing of when people have town meeting, it's unlikely to get another town meeting called. But we also have to come to an agreement that they're gonna vote in the affirmative for. So it's a twofold problem that you have to, you have to get to agreement with all four towns about the numbers and the method. And then they have the mechanics of actually calling a special town meeting to execute the warrant.
The second question is also a logistical question. Jennifer's scenario in which we vote the extra according to the existing assessment method. In my understanding, and again, still not a hundred percent on that, ties, is that different than voting the existing budget? And continuing to seek gifts from the town, the towns? It seems to me that in one case, and maybe there's some leverage issues I'm not appreciating and I'm gonna put those aside for a moment. In one case, say we, we're hoping for a million dollars or eight hundred thousand dollars from the four towns. We vote this budget and we get that money. How does that differ than voting a budget with the extra eight hundred thousand or a million dollars given this assessment method? And hoping they pass it? So passing it now and trying to lean on whoever or plead to give us the extra money, how is that different than passing the budget intact? Cuz my understanding, which like I said, is arguably incomplete, is that if we vote it into the budget, then forever forward, the towns will be paying additional money based on what we vote rather than that extra amount of money. So we're actually asking our towns to commit to giving us that money plus an increase at four percent or two percent forever forward.
Yeah, you're putting a million dollars back into the total.
Point of order, we usually, us, raise our hands.
Yep, and Doug, can you answer that?
Yeah, so I think there's a, there's a couple pieces this, that I, there's a couple different pieces to play into this. So, um, and I'll start with the scenario where we pass what we have and ask for additional gifts and grants. So if we do that, then that funding that is essentially a gift or grant, which would be external to the budget, we have flexibility to use in whatever way we want and it's not dependent upon all four towns passing it. Now, you may get one town that gives you money and none of the other three or whatever. So you, the risk there is that you're only gonna restore some, whatever you get funded, right? And as you pointed out, it does not build or alter the base from which the assessments are, are crafted for the, the following year. If you do it the other way, where we build it into the assessment, then you're changing the base from, from, from that year to the next year. And so that, that does change the, the paradigm of funding level. But it's also one where I think, you know, the, the towns are struggling to do the current level of funding from their regular sources of funds that, that are regenerative and renewable each year. So their property tax that they gain each year. This is likely going to require them to fund, any additional funding above what's in this is gonna require them to tap into reserves if they have them. That's a one-time money. In other words, it's not regenerative. And so therefore, it's gonna perpetuate the problem with the towns to be able to support the budget in coming years, even though it does build the base. So I think it's, that's part of the political calculus and, and both methods are, you know, both approaches are fine. They have different things that come, come with them. If you, uh, if you pass the budget as presented and then, you know, make the request of each of the towns for additional funding and grant gift, you know, you have a budget that passes and can be implemented on, on July one, you'll have, you know, they'll have met and will have voted or not voted for, for additional funding and you restore whatever that allows you to restore. That has, is drawbacks as well. If you vote something that then gets rejected, then you have to go through the one-twelfth process as part of your, uh, you know, and call special town meetings and all of that. So there's, there's different ways to approach this and, and that's, you know, like I said, different political calculus you guys have to, to weigh as far as how you wanna approach it.
Thank you.
Uh, William is next.
So I have a couple questions also. So, March seventeenth, you said, was our deadline. If we didn't have a budget that we voted on, on March seventeenth, could what, the towns not in theory just move their meeting? Their four town, their, their meetings? So then their deadline is actually past that or no? No, okay. And
You can probably speak to that cuz Leverett's first, so.
There's a, there's a huge number of things that happen at town meeting. It's scheduled long in advance. The regional budget is a small but important item. I doubt that any, that Leverett would change their town meeting because of that. If necessary, they would call an extra town meeting.
Okay. So if we don't have something passed on March seventeen, then the towns would then have to call a special meeting, but they could? It would incur money and costs on those towns. But the deadline is, if we don't have a budget by July first and it's, that's like the end of the line and then we go into the state mandate, do we know what the numbers would be, that, that would be the one-twelfth? Cuz I know you said it's based on last, like this year's number.
Yeah, I'd have to look up the particulars again, but I can, I, I, um, but I believe that they use the current year's operating budget as the basis. But how the costs are apportioned is based on the fiscal twenty-five minimum local contributions, which are in some ways refined when the, when the state budget is set, which has been traditionally, well, it's supposed to be done by July one, but it's been over the last couple of years getting finished in August. So it could be a circumstance where we don't really have true numbers until August. But they don't tend to vary wildly at that point. We have a sense of, of what it's gonna be. But the, you know, if you take the straight statutory method, the, the difference for the communities, um, in how the, the costs are apportioned is really different than it is now. I think, I did a quick thing today. Amherst is almost unchanged. Pelham pays a lot more, Chutesberry pays a lot more, uh, and Leverett pay, they all pay a lot more in, in different ways, but
What would the number?
But Amherst holds, actually, Amherst goes below four percent in the one I did really quickly.
So what would the number, like, I know what, the budget that we have before us now to vote on is cutting one point six million out of the budget. What would that number look like for the one-twelfth? Is it gonna be, be even smaller than that one point six million cut? Like, is it gonna be a three million cut? Is it a two million cut? Like, and then how would the district, what would we have to do as a superintendent if you were facing that one-twelfth? How would that affect layoffs or, or, you know?
So, if you give me a minute, I'll see if I can kind of run that number real quick. Cuz they base it off the year, um, and I will share this once I get it up. Right now, I'm just navigating, so.
Thank you, Doug.
You are sharing, Doug, just so you know.
No, I know that, but I'm not sharing on the, on the, on the
You're up, you are, you're sharing right here.
I'm here, I am, yes, but not on the local
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
So, or can't see any of this, or it's people at home.
Oh. Point of order, Sarah Best. May I ask that members of the public try your best? What, what we're doing is not easy. We're talking to each other. We're trying to come to a, we're trying to come to some sort of solution. I really, I would like, I would like to ask that members of the public let us speak to each other and try not to interrupt or say, or shout or say anything. It's very distracting. And we're like, the time for public comment is over and we really need to focus on each other at this point.
Thank you, Jennifer. Yes. Public comment is over. You are welcome to email us, but public comment is over for tonight. Public comment is over for tonight. You're welcome to email us.
Point of order, I, I want Vince to sit down so we can continue this.
All right. Thank you, Irv. All right, are you ready, Doug?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So they, they base it upon the current years. So, you know, first thing to note is that our current budget's 34806570 is the number, and the last year or the current year is 33703908. So first of all, we're starting from a much smaller, I mean, a smaller budget, right? And so, you know, chapter 70 is the same number. These estimates for revenues are the same. So these numbers here are based upon the pure statutory method, which means it's about, our current estimates for minimum local contributions add up to about $14 million. And so anything above 14 million, which is about $7 million in broad terms here of, of funding, is done by our regional agreement method, which is, is using the five-year rolling average of students. So it's this sort of blended piece of, of, of assessment, assessing it above that. But what they do is, is this is what they set the, the full year assessments to be, which for, because, partly because our budget's not growing at all. For Amherst, that's a, what, if we're annualizing it, Amherst would go down 1.2% from what they're paying this year. Pelham would go up 14.7%, Leverett would go up 7.2%, and Chutesbury would go down 1.1%. What they actually do is do a 1/12 budget, and so they charge the towns, this is 1/12th of this number here. You know, this amount, that's what they would say, send, send the, you know, the regional school district this much money on August 1st. And that would continue for, you know, while we work through the, the rest of that. But because, you can see how profoundly different the, the breakdown of, of costs are when we use a purely statutory method. Because it's, you know, with the averaging that we use and, and some of those other things, we have a, a much different representation of, of costs for each of, of the, of the town. So it would really impact Pelham in the short run during that, that time period where we were seeing this.
So my, I guess my question is that 21 million 908? What is that number if we do the 1.6 million and we pass the budget that's on the table now? Like, what's the difference between?
Oh, as far as what's being assessed?
No, the total, the total amount of available funds to the school with today's proposed budget that we have on Wordox versus those 21 million.
Oh. Let's answer that question. 22 million 887 114.
Right.
Or, oh no, I'm sorry, 22 730. That's the, that's the number 22 730 943.
Our budget this year is 22?
For the four towns, the assessment that, that supports the funding with a million six taken out, is that 22 730?
Oh, so it comes up to, it comes up to the same number?
Yes.
So if, so if we don't pass a budget and it gets kicked down the road and it goes to the 1/12th, the budget the state's gonna push us into is gonna be the same dollars coming in, different, different towns, but the school itself will be receiving the same dollars?
That we received this year.
No, I'm talking about for the budget that we're trying to pass.
Right.
Right, and so, but the, the difficulty is, is in having that, is that the contractual changes for all the staff that kick in July 1, kick in July 1 regardless. And so the, you know, in, in the first month or two, it's more manageable. But over time, it's a much more draconian circumstance because again, we're, we're, you know, the, the, the base totality of, of revenue available under the statutory method is still based on 33 million, not 34 and change. So we have a million dollars of resource that's less that we're working from.
That's what I was trying to ask.
Right, 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 right.
The number's not the same.
Right, no, it's not the same because, because this number, you know, the 1/12 budget is based on this number.
Okay.
Not on that number.
So essentially, it's gonna be, you are, whoever is in your role would have to then cut the 1.6 plus an additional million.
Yes.
So they would be cutting 2.6 million, and so it would be larger
Yes.
cuts across
Right.
more departments
And then
if we went to the 1/12.
Yeah, and, and
Okay, that's what, that was always trying to get to that.
What the state wants you, and part of why the state does that is because it's, it's pretty motivating. If you had to be a little flippant, sorry.
Right.
But it's pretty motivating to fix that because you, you don't take on, I mean, you have expenses right at the beginning of fiscal year, but not as many. And so the idea is that you would be, as four towns, working very diligently to resolve the differences and get to a budget. Because then they re-correct to that new budget once you settle it. But if you don't, as you progress through, you're gonna have to make additional cuts, like you say, up to the sort of 2.6.
And then I have one other quick question. If we redid, if, if we did what Jennifer suggested, where we send in a bigger budget and say they actually pass it, okay? Could we redo the assessment method for the following year? So the towns, we wouldn't be asking for 4% and the guardrail would be based on those numbers?
We absolutely could.
Okay.
And we probably, I, I would, I would bet that that's slightly what the towns would ask.
Just because we passed a bigger budget doesn't mean that we're gonna use the same method for the next year to apply those guardrails.
Yeah, when we have an alternative method, because we have to prove it every year, we essentially, you know, we, and recent history, you know, we in the process of getting to this assessment method, which this is the third year in a row, for the previous at least five, if not seven years, we had a different assessment method every single year. And part of it was, it was trying to do a transition to this sort of method. But you can do it, you can kind of, I don't wanna say make it up as you go, but you can change it every year if, if, as, as needs be. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Tillman?
Is it 40 or 45 days before town meeting?
45.
So 45 is tomorrow. That's what Google calculated for.
Do they? Could be. I may have miscalculated. I can tell you that.
So Google searched for 45 days before April 27, 2024, it says Wednesday, March 13th, but.
Because I count holidays and, I mean, it's literally Saturdays and Sundays and holidays all count, so.
I assume so. Maybe need to pull out a calendar, but that's not my point.
I do.
So I agree with Bridget that we need to vote on something that makes sense to us and that we can live with. And with the current inflation, I just think it's not realistic to be limited by 4%. It's just, it leads to these cuts that are unacceptable. As for Amherst College, I agree that we, that Amherst should have a conversation with them about contributions to the town. But I don't think we, as the school committee, should be so presumptuous as to assume that all of their contributions would go through the school committee because they're part of the town and the town has many needs. And so I don't feel, I'm not an Amherst resident, I'm representing Leverett, but I, it wouldn't seem right that we should assume that we can negotiate with them directly and use their money. I think it would need to go through town. In terms of actually passing a budget, assuming that we still can do this maybe at the Thursday, at the scheduled meeting, and we'll just round the days up. I would recommend that we specifically ask you, Doug, to redo the budget and add back 1 million dollars. So, and, which is what, you know, Jennifer proposed, right? Put that back into that focus, that, that those go to student-facing. I'll get sentences together, but I'll use that one, positions. And that we have an appropriate assessment method that is basically identical to, as far as it's possible to the, the one we used last year, except that the percentages, the, the limits are slightly different, so that we can ask the towns for that much more. I think it's important that we do pass the bigger budget so that the towns see that this is a long-term commitment that they have to make. Because if it's a one-time fund, we're gonna have a huge problem next year. Because that won't be part of the base, and then if, the numbers will be even larger and it will be even more difficult to explain that. And we can, you know, give the towns time to figure out how they can do it. Amherst can talk to Amherst College and see how they can make the money. And that way, we would have a past budget. We can go to the towns. We can explain why we're needing this. And we can hope that they see that this makes sense. And in the worst case, we'll go through the 1/12th and rehash it.
Bridget, you are next on the list.
Yeah, thanks. So, I have, I have, I have a few questions. So the first one is just, we're, we're talking about the, the town meetings. But in order to try and get to the place with the town meetings, or if it goes to town meeting and it doesn't pass, do we immediately have to go to a town meeting or can we have another four towns meeting to all get on the same page? That's my first question.
So I think as far as, you know, the process as four communities that the four towns use to come to agreement is entirely up to us. So, yeah, the four towns meeting would be the place to start because that's select boards and finance committees. And then I think we'd have to sort of hash out to a place of, of commonality so that then when they call their town meeting, it's likely everybody passes the, the vote.
So my second question is sort of procedural. I've noticed, first thing is that I've noticed that we have a consensus, I think. In some ways, maybe Tillman accepted that we create some sort of pilot negotiating committee to meet with representatives of Amherst College. And so my question is sort of a point of order, like, should we make a motion now to pass something like that? Or are we constrained to the budget? And if I were gonna make a motion on the budget, would that be the right place to start and save the other thing for after? And so maybe that's, you know, a question for the chair.
Amherst College is not on the agenda.
But the budgets, the budget is on the agenda and we're talking about ways to raise revenue. And so it's a budget question that I feel like we had pretty good consensus in the discussion.
I think probably because we are talking about the budget and it is a way to, like, help support our budget, it's probably okay. But I feel 63% confident in that answer. I will say that I have had conversations with Amherst College today and yesterday, and they have been fantastic. And I, I have plans to have another conversation, probably tomorrow or the next day. And we, you know, the college wants to partner with us and we are trying to find a way to make that happen as quickly as possible in a way that is supportive to the, the region, because we are, we are separate from the town of Amherst. And, and a way that works for the college. So we're working on it.
So then I think I'll go ahead and make the Amherst College motion. I move that we create pilot negotiation committee of three regional school committee representatives to meet with representatives from Amherst College about long and short-term financial contributions to the Amherst Pelham Regional Schools.
Second.
In terms of discussion of that, I, I think that we need to stop.
Irv, hold on. Tillman's hand was up.
Yeah, but I've had my hand up all the time.
I know.
And, and it, it gets ignored.
It's not. It's on the list.
Except we're breaking in.
Irv, it is on the list, just like everyone else's hand. You are in a few moments.
So I wanted to comment on the, on the motion, not on the other thing.
Yes.
I, I fully agree with the spirit, but I'm gonna vote no on this motion because I think it's procedurally wrong. And I don't think that the regional school committee should leave that conversation. It should be the town.
Can I, can I just respond to that really quickly? I think that the town of Amherst has been working for quite a long time to develop something. But if we think about it, Tillman, the town of Amherst can get money for the schools and still go ahead and say, okay, we've got this pot of money, so next year we give 4%. So as Leverett's representative, or Chutesbury's representative, or Pelham's representative, it's important that the voices of your community and of the students who go to the schools from those communities are also represented at the table. And those aren't represented unless every, unless the school committee has a voice, because we're the only ones for that. So I respect your decision. I just want to let you know I did think that process through. And I even talked to Amherst Town Manager and other folks about it, and I think it is, in my view, it's the right move.
Jennifer, did you have comment on the motion?
Yes. I don't think it's, my understanding of open meeting law is that it is permitted to make a motion that wasn't on the agenda. I think it's permitted. It's not best practice, but it's, it doesn't violate open meeting law. Like bodies can make motions and pass them even if they weren't on the agenda. So I, I think procedurally, it's fine.
Thank you. Irv?
First, Sarah Best, you realize that my hand is up, but you always ignore me and call on other people before me. That's A. B, the, the, the motion is, is something I think is short-sighted. First, if we are going to be asking Amherst College for money, there are some, there are some considerations that need to be made. Second, that it's, it should not be just made on the behalf of the regional schools. Regional schools, it really should be a, a, a community-wide effort between Amherst, because Amherst is always gonna be in a position of wanting money, and the region. To just to make, to focus it on the region is, 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 is not a good way to do it. The other thing is that we have not talked about strategy in terms of talking to Amherst about what we want. We do, in, in other words, we haven't said, hey, are we gonna do something where they do a one and done and it's over for that year and it's done? We have no strategy, no tactics have been talked about. No committee has been set down to say, hey, here's how, here's this committee that is composed of, of, of the regional school committee members and Amherst members who are gonna talk on the behalf of both. And we are gonna have this unified approach in terms of talking. You know, if you're going to just ask for 1 million dollars to fill this void, that is not the strategy. When you could be asking for an endowment of X number of dollars. I am just frustrated that people would be going and talking without a strategy and tactics in terms of what the ask is going to be.
Deb, did you have a comment on the motion?
Yeah, it wasn't about the motion though, so skip me.
Okay. Are there any more comments about the motion on the table?
Could I just hear it again? I'm so tired.
Yep, I was gonna ask the same thing.
Yeah. I move we create a pilot negotiation committee of the, of three regional school committee representatives to meet with representatives from Amherst College about long and short-term financial contributions to the regional schools.
Can I make a comment, point of discussion?
Yes.
So currently, Sarah Best, do I understand that you are in discussions with them on, about funding or resources?
Yes.
So then this that has been presented would just be sending three of us versus just you?
Yes.
Okay. Just asking, because it doesn't feel like it's much different.
I, I mean, it wouldn't have to.
No, no, I'm just saying, it, it, no, it, it, it doesn't feel that, that, we, we're already asking. And so it'd only strengthen the ask if there was more of us there. And then we could have maybe a, a deeper conversation before those individuals go there.
Great. I, I don't know if it was Sarah or Jennifer. I'm sorry. Sarah and then Jennifer.
So would this committee be empowered to make an agreement or to bring in, an agreement back to the full committee?
I think as a subcommittee, our, the only option is to bring information back to the full committee to make choices about this.
Just clarifying. Thank you.
Yes, yes. It's just conversation, information gathering, bringing things back to the committee. Jennifer?
So two things. Subcommittees are never empowered to act on behalf of the committee. I have a question about the motion. Bridget, I didn't hear you say pilot the first time you made the motion. When you say pilot, do you mean payment in lieu of taxes? Or do you mean like lowercase p-i-l?
Lowercase, I would say.
Okay, thank you.
But the, the spirit of the idea of, you know, But the, the spirit of the idea of, you know, contributions to education in the communities that we represent.
Deb and then Irv.
So I do have a, uh, something I'd like to add to this committee.
Discussion of the motion.
Discussion, yes. So, I think Amherst College is our neighbor. I think they do things to support the schools. I think that is not necessarily part of the narrative that the town, that the committee, that the community has necessarily engaged in. And I would find it, um, I don't know, I, I would want to broaden the purpose of the committee to partnerships and conversations and weaving an appropriate narrative regarding the relationship between the schools and the college.
I would accept a friendly amendment.
I don't know how to do that. Can you do it?
I don't know if I can do it for my own, but part to.
Okay, can you read the motion?
Yeah, and let, I can make a suggestion. If you agree, I'll, I'll let you read it.
That works.
I move that we create a negotiation committee of three regional school committee representatives to meet with representatives from Amherst College about long-term, um, partnerships and financial contributions to the regional schools, acknowledging their past contributions and looking forward to future, um, collaborations or something. Because I think the spirit of it that we want to put forward is they're one of our community partners and we want to work with them. And, you know, it might be great to have an alum on that committee who recognizes that.
That would, that alum would be me. And that would be my amended motion.
The secondor accepts.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion on our amended? Oh, Irv, I'm sorry.
Yes. All right. So, I think that this, I will vote against this motion because it's short-sighted. And it doesn't take into consideration that we have two communities that we're talking about, in essence. Amherst and the regional schools. Amherst, Amherst at one point is going to need money. And then when we do, are we going to go back to Amherst College and say, hey, why don't you fund us, Amherst? So just to make it a one, one-time, I mean, to make it a deal or discussion based solely on the region, I think is really, really a disservice to Amherst community where Amherst College is. That's A. And B, and B, my, the, I, I want, I don't know whether I'm going to be on this committee. But if I am, if I am, I would like to, uh, say that straight ahead, another community, that ran up into this kind of, of, uh, difficulty for the schools. And what we asked a very wealthy company to do was to endow us. So they endowed us for ten million dollars.
Irv, are we still talking, are you still talking about the motion?
Yeah, yes, I am talking about the motion.
I think Sarah had a question, but when.
What I'm saying is that we asked for, asked them for an endowment of ten million dollars and then assumed that there would be a return rate of three percent, which they would give us every year on that with the three percent, first three percent upfront. So, it, it's, when I hear, you know, well, we're going to ask for one, you know, a million dollars and that's done. I, I get like alarmed at how naive that is.
Sarah?
First of all, I don't believe there's any particular number on the table with respect to Amherst College. Maybe there's confusion about how we were earlier talking about asking the towns, including the town of Amherst, to contribute to a one million dollar, one-time gift. That was not the college, that was the four towns. Secondly, maybe Doug can, can tell me. I have been told, or I've heard at least, that UMass, UMass's pilot with the town of Amherst does provide funding to the Amherst Elementary Schools. Is that?
The strategic partnership agreement was different.
Whatever, sorry, whatever.
The pilot's a pretty particular thing that's in like the cherry sheet for the town of Amherst, but that's a separate conversation. And also one that probably should be explored, but that's a longer-term thing. This strategic partnership agreement, uh, with UMass has two hundred thousand dollars that come to the schools, plural, school districts, plural. A hundred and eighty thousand of that is in the elementary schools. Twenty thousand of that is used, no, I'm sorry, one eighty-five is used in the elementary schools. Fifteen is used in the region. We use that to support ELL teaching because most of what that's trying to support one of the areas where, um, university has students that live on campus housing that don't pay property tax. And ELL needs to sort of the greatest particular, you know, impact from that group and that's part of how that's, how we've leveraged those funds for that. So most of it comes to the, uh, the Amherst School District and a small amount comes to the region.
Anna, I had your down on my list next. I was so.
I was thinking about adding a friendly amendment. So, and I, I don't know what the appropriate language is. So, the amendment, the, the motion has three school committee members as being part of the committee. And I'm wondering if it makes sense to add a member of the Amherst community. So, I don't know if it's the town manager or the town council, or if that is too complicated and should not be done. No. Uh, okay.
We are, yeah, I, well, I agree. Go ahead, Sarah.
Subcommittee of our committee, I think we should just stay as committee members. Because that is how we are potentially advocating to Amherst College, right, to have that, that work together. So it is just for the region. The same way we can't, maybe this is slightly off, you know, expanding, but the same way we can't just, we don't have a town that we, you know, we are four towns, we are, you know, an entity unto ourselves, which is like the reason we have four towns meeting rather than just a town council that, you know. So I, I think it should be just members of the region. Deb?
Two points. One, Amherst Committee had an extra fifteen thousand dollars. It's not a lot of money, but we did have an extra fifteen thousand dollars that we declined to give to the region. And that was our right. But it seems to me that that move indicated that there is not necessarily a benefit to combining those two entities together. That there are considered separate interests and I respect that. What? Sorry.
Okay, so.
So that's.
Draw my friendly amendment.
That, that was my first point. And my second point is going to be that public comment has that the A P E A was told that nobody's asked Amherst College for any money. So the fact that the town has or has not done that, and maybe that's not the reason to base pu- a decision on public comment, it, it just makes me feel like this is a political situation and it's complicated and we're, I just want to keep it simple. And simple is just sticking with advocating for the region. That's all I got to say.
Irv?
As I said, I'm going to vote against this, but if we are going to do this, do this, and hit this subcommittee, then it would be behold, it would be really, really great for this subcommittee that's, to sit down with Sarah as soon as possible to find out what her conversations have been. And then, and then, and then formulate, and formulate some strategies and tactics of talking to Amherst College. No person goes and asks for money, if you are not proper, et cetera, goes and asks for money without some strategy and tactics in mind that are agreeable. I, I just hope that happens.
All right. Jennifer?
I move to end debate. So now we vote to end debate. And if it passes, then we come immediately to vote on the motion.
Excellent. Thank you for the explanation.
But it needs a second.
I will second it. All the Sars will second it. Uh, Jennifer?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Sarah Bass?
Yes.
And Irv?
Abstained.
Okay. So it passes eight to zero to one with the one abstention being Irv. So we now move immediately to a vote, right? That's right. Okay, excellent. Can you read the motion for us one final time? We're just reading it to listen. We are not commenting. We're just listening.
And I can send the text to whoever needs it.
Perfect, thank you.
I move we create a negotiation committee of three regional school committee representatives. It, I think, three regional Amherst School Committee Representatives to meet with representatives. Oh, sorry. Let me start again. Yeah. Let me try again. Sorry. It is late. I move we create a negotiation committee of three regional school committee representatives to meet with representatives from Amherst College about long and short-term partnerships and financial contributions to the regional schools, acknowledging past collaborations and looking forward to future partnerships.
Thank you. So, I will second it?
It was already.
I was already seconded. I, ew, sorry. It was you that seconded, right?
Yes, I seconded it.
All right. Jennifer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Tillman?
No.
Uh, Sarah Bass, yes. Irv?
No.
So it passes seven to two to zero. Okay. Back to the budget.
I also wondered if, I don't know, could we move to a motion on that? Do you feel like we had some consensus or should we still discuss?
Sarah?
Do we have clarity on our deadline? Is it tonight? Is it tomorrow?
I recount it, depends on whether you count the twenty-seventh or not, but it's either Thursday or Wednesday, really. So I would say Thursday, since we have a meeting scheduled, I think it's Thursday, so we will need to vote on Thursday.
Okay.
I have a question.
Anna?
So Doug, if we added the eight hundred and seven thousand dollars to the budget as a budget adjustment, then that would not affect, would that still, that would not affect the allocation because it would just adjust the budget? And so the allocations to the towns would remain the same? Is that, or is that not true?
No, I wouldn't play it that way. The other thing to keep in mind is one of the items of reductions is, is staff turnover. So if you put back fourteen people, that staff turnover basically goes to zero. So you're going to add that seventy-five thousand or so back in or close to it. I mean, I have to look at it a little more closely to, to sort of put that number in place, but, yeah, it would have a cascading effect. It's a little more than just taking it out.
Tillman and then Irv?
So indeed, in just of time, I suggest that we ask Doug to create a new version of the budget that in total comes out to be one million dollar more for the towns. And as we said, represents all the values we discussed previously, presented to us on, on Thursday with the text for the assessment method that would raise the funds to fund that budget. And that we end tonight's meeting with that and continue on Thursday. But, and, yeah, end of comment.
Was that a motion?
No, it's not a motion. I, it's just a suggestion.
Irv, you were, hide your hand up next.
Yeah, just, uh, I, I, I really beg everyone to pay attention to what Doug has said in relationship to the impact of this additional money going into the budget. And if, and, and if the towns do not pass it, what that means, A. And B, if they in fact passed, passed it, the financial impact that would he- hit all of the towns, especially Pelham, in terms of what they would have to come up with. And, 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 and if I understand this, all the towns would have to agree to this if this were going to happen. And if one town says no, the thing does not work. So, I mean, I, you know, you know, I, I'm like everyone else. Want to go and do wishful think, thinking, fine. We want to kick this can down the road to make it someone else's responsibility, fine. It's not great. It's not responsible on our part, but we wish to do this and people vote on it? And they say, yeah, this is what we're going to do, knowing what's going to happen? And, and, and you knowingly do that? That is something that I will not knowingly do when I know what the consequences are in the beginning.
Jennifer, and then I have Tillman, Deb and Sarah.
I want to, I, I, I'm going to say what it's, anyway, it's been a long night. So, Irv asked earlier, is this an emergency? And my answer is yes. This is a budget emergency. It's a budget crisis. And I said the other day, desperate times call for desperate measures. And so we're doing something unprecedented, doing something that feels scary and there's a lot of unknowns, and that's okay. We should embrace that. We should not operate out of fear. Fear of failure or fear of the one twelfth budget or fear that one town won't act. We don't know what's going to happen. We've never done this before. And even if we had done it before, it, it, we, we don't know what's going to happen. We shouldn't operate out of fear of failure or fear of the unknown. It, it, it might be hard, it might be complicated, but we're up to the task. We can do it. And I agree with Tillman's recommendation.
Tillman?
I, I just want to respectfully disagree with Irv. I think we're not bending our responsibility by voting for a budget that is good for the school. I think we're doing it in the most thoughtful way we can do, do it by expanding some of the constraints. And we have two unpleasant options. Either an unpleasant conversation with the towns or we regret cutting important programs. And I'm not ready to do the latter.
Six days ago, March sixth, we committed as a committee to looking for other funding sources, to going to state sources, to going to local sources, to advocating on behalf of the schools. This is a different tactic. This is not. This is saying we're going to solve the problem for the next fiscal year along with the problem for this fiscal year, which is a different approach than what we had said we would do. I am much more comfortable doing what Tillman is advocating for on Thursday. Rather than today, I would still look to solving today's crisis today, making an effort as we committed ourselves to, to looking for other funding sources continuously and then coming back and discussing for the next fiscal year, our plan going forward.
Sarah?
Yeah, what, I'm still just thinking about the calendar and how, how, how things might play out. When is the last of the three town meetings?
That's a great question. Um, do you know when Schutze's Great Town Meeting is? I haven't looked up Schutze's.
April twentieth?
So I know that Leverett's the last first Saturday in, in April, Pelham's the first Saturday in May. In the last couple of years, Schutze's Berry's. In the last couple of years, um, Sheetsbury is, what's that?
Last Saturday in April.
That's their standard one? Did they, they have moved it to June the last couple of years? So I don't know if that's the case for this year or if they're doing it that, the twenty-seventh as well. In their, in their town chart, like in Sheetsbury's town charter, it's the last Saturday in April, but the last two or three years, because of the pandemic and doing it outside, they've shifted to June. Did they set a date?
April twenty-seventh.
Okay, so they've gone back to their traditional date. So we have two town meetings on Saturday the twenty-seventh and then, and then Pelham's will be the following Saturday.
So that's better than it being in June. If there's a July first, yeah.
Right.
Uh, Irv?
Yeah, I know, I'm all for asking for additional monies, uh, from the, from the, from other town, from the towns. Uh, but I'm not, I'm, I'm not for going out and doing something that has very negative consequences to it and then saying, well, we don't know, we don't know what's going to happen. We do know what's going to happen if these efforts, if this motion or if this idea about uh, passing a budget larger than what are, what, what we were allocating. We know what the consequences are. So, so if you cannot live with the consequences that are going to be there, all right, and we know what those consequences are. If you can't, if, if we cannot, and I cannot, in all good conscience, vote for something which I know that the negative consequences far outrage, uh, outweighs what I consider to be this, um, this effort to, uh, to put a budget that, that, that we know is going to be rejected. And we know what the consequences of that rejection are going to be. I, I, I just don't understand this wishful thinking.
Uh, I have Tillman, William, Sarah, oh my gosh, sorry, nope. Bridgette, William, Sarah and then Tillman.
Um, I was just, I guess, wondering if we had a consensus to, should we, if we have a consensus to make a motion around what Tillman said so that we could end discussion and call the time?
Do we need to make a motion? I think we just.
I think we can just make Tillman's favorite motion that says we've been here for too long.
No, I was actually gonna move to adjourn. Like literally, just. But I think there were other people who wanted to comment.
Uh, William and then?
I was just gonna ask Doug, it, we passed a bigger budget here, the four towns say no. So, or two of the towns, whatever it is. So that, that last meeting is end of April. No, end of.
Pelham's is in the first seven in May.
Okay. So we would know by first Saturday in May if it was passed or not. And if it's not passed, what happens?
Um, we connect with the state about how to, how to proceed. Um, if we can, if.
Like would it come back to us and we can make a new budget?
Well.
And we still have the time to get it forward?
It's a cooperative process where we'd have to, you know, we, you would have to pass a new budget that would be different in some way.
Right.
And we would have to be then coordinating with the four, four communities to then schedule an opportunity for them to formally vote the, their budget, uh, vote this bu, that new budget. So it's, it's a twofold process of a new budget that you guys have to approve at a meeting and then subsequently the towns would have to call a special town meeting, the three towns would have to call a special town meeting in order to, um, uh, vote on that budget that you then posted them.
If they didn't, if, is it this, like, I know when we talked about the debt authorization, if they didn't act, then it was authorized? But if they don't act on the budget, is it also authorized or no?
No, they have to, they have to actively vote on it. Because it is actually a true appropriation from, from the towns to do that. So it actually, they can't even really in some senses finish their, their budget for fiscal twenty-five as a town until they vote this component.
Then do you think that realistically, from beginning of May, it came back, it failed, and so now we're gonna go back to this budget we have right now today on the table that's one point six million in cuts? Is there enough timeline to then get that one pushed forward, do you think? Realistically, before we go to the one-twelve?
I'd have to, we'd have to look at the sort of town meeting, uh, the charter for the towns.
Could you have an answer for next, on Thursday?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, sorry. I don't need your answer today, just my, on Thursday.
In state law, town meetings require a ten-day lead time to, to, to sort of put the warrant out in front of the public. Individual communities may have longer than that.
Okay.
So that will drive the, the actual timeline, but.
Okay, and I'll be quiet now. Thank you, Doug.
Sarah?
I do want to adjourn, but if we have a second budget, do we again have the forty-five day notice?
No. No, because we're operating outside of the, the fundamental basis of, of the requirements for a budget. Except to pass an initial budget by the forty-five days ahead of time.
Okay.
Once that, if that fails, then it's a whole new kettle fish and, yeah, I mean, the state will, will be very directive in their, in their efforts. But if we're, you know, to, to the point that William had is if we can schedule, if we can, you know, schedule our meeting and schedule and vote a budget that then four towns will agree to, you know, quickly, that's better for everybody.
Okay. Tillman?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
I think, I think Jennifer was a little quicker on the job.
I'll hear you put it down.
Uh, so, uh, Jennifer?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Anna?
Yeah.
Bridgette?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Sarah Bass, yes.